We're starting.
All right, this is the continuation of the Emergency Service Facilities Building Committee. It's twenty-sixth September twenty twenty-four, seven oh one V M. We're starting. We started at six thirty. A little delay. We're in the wrong room. We're back. We're gonna quickly go over the role again. Marco, Toulis, Ralph, Howser, Snyder, McCoo. Nick is seated for Cobb, Gergos, and Keller, Kenton, Melix.
Nick was seated for Snyder.
For Snyder. Well, okay. We'll have to reseat him. All right. So I guess we need a new motion?
No, it's automatic. When the when the person that alternate is covering arrives at a meeting, they're automatically take their place. The alternate moves back to alternate.
Okay, but we could seat them for Stewart.
Stewart's an alternate.
Stewart's.
Oh, Stewart's an alternate too?
Yeah.
Okay, but Peter's not here. Peter's a seated member, isn't he?
Yes.
Yes, but the alternates are for the fire departments.
I'm sorry. Okay, really?
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
Have we made it confusing enough yet?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Then we're all set. All right, we started with, we, for a little minutes, present to speak. Now that we have people present, is there anyone online present to speak? Seeing none, we started with old business.
No, this is me.
That's you.
That's me.
Okay. We were talking about remediation of station thirteen. We landed on the fact that we are going to not spend any money on that building until we have direction, a more, a more system, clear trajectory about what we're gonna do. If we're approved to use these consultants, we feel that that will be a great place to begin. That the R F P should, if they, you know, if they hear the when we get the information that we requested through our request for proposal, we should have solid current up-to-date information which will guide us towards our next decision. We then spoke briefly about what can we do to reduce expenses and to reduce any further expenses at that building, including shutting off the heat or whatever. And I believe we ended off with something about some electronic gear that needs to be protected from temperature variations, but we don't know the tolerances or
Correct. I don't know. It's the state fiber. P S C N. I don't know where, other than the shelter, I don't know where else it can go.
But that would have to be moved.
Well, well, yeah, if it gets condemned, it's gotta be moved, but from a, from a heat and cold perspective, I don't know.
I don't think it could survive.
It may.
Okay.
It may enough of its own heat to
It may. Right. Nothing else. Maybe a small
Throw a heater or something.
Right, a little heater or some, so, so we did
Can we make this an action item while we are?
I'm gonna say, do we need to, should we?
Make a little poly and go under.
Yeah, how do we wanna make that an action item?
Well, someone who has the best contact with the public safety network people. So you know, the fire chief, Wellington one is gonna reach out to determine what we can do with the switch.
If that could switch.
Is it a switch?
It's, uh, yeah, sure.
Oh, switch gear or whatever you want to call it. All right, so it's a box.
It's gonna need to be moved in the future a hundred percent anyway, right? No matter what our options are. So if putting it in that tower hut is like a long-term solution, then like let's just
I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I think the fiber runs totally cold. It's terminated at fire houses and all of these. I think they would actually run that fiber from the firehouse to that tower and then it gets seven to eight years for three or four years.
We're gonna need a long-term solution anyway though, right?
Right. Well, just thinking that though.
Crying right now.
Yeah. Right, but I kind of think what Tyler said, based on the climate, just let's not spend any money on it at all in any, and actually try to reduce the expenses to a minimum.
Yeah, like Ron's and Ralph, you can make a cocoon around it, a box of insulation.
Yeah, right.
Got a little cool heater or power.
James had asked about the trucks.
Yes, what?
So we did come to an agreement with Becker's Construction. Becker's is going to take E T two thirteen for the wire.
Excellent. That we have the Wellington Hill, by the way.
Yep.
By the cemetery.
By the cemetery. That's okay, cool.
We'll have limited, we will have access to it if we absolutely need it. The officers will have access to it at night if we absolutely need it.
Okay.
The agreement was is if we cannot go get it, so people aren't going through the building at night.
Sure. So you have keys to the gate.
You put a Knox box or something.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're putting a Knox box and gate lock, and then we're putting a Knox box itself on the building.
Perfect, okay.
So then that actually helps them after this is all done and over, that will have access in case of an emergency to their building.
And what does that leave out in the call?
Nothing. The foam trailer is going to Ashford Station two twenty. Other animals is gonna stay in Stafford for right now until they need that bay. If they come back and say they need that bay for any particular reason, then we'll go from there. But right now, we're okay.
All right. How much does that change? The times, do you think, having to go to Becker's, having to get a lockbox, going through that? What does that, how does that alter times?
It's a, you know, a secondary or
That a couple of minutes or something.
That would be
A welfare structure.
Equivalent to starting from station forty-nine.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
It's that close.
All right.
So I, I wouldn't waste any time doing cranking a number.
I see. All right. So basically, since we're eliminating station thirteen from the, all, all calls would emanate from the two remaining stations, so your spreadsheet still works. So, okay.
The time distance calculations wouldn't change significantly.
The trailer is hopefully gonna get moved Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, something next week. Their electrical is supposed to be done by tomorrow.
Okay, where's it going to?
It's going to the south station.
Oh, okay.
Building. Public Works helped us put some buildings down.
Nice. Public Works has been really helpful, I think.
They absolutely have.
Tried to do one on this track. Very good. All right. There wouldn't be a cost to drain the heating system if that becomes necessary. So that would be, even though we said spend the money, there'd be some there, but
I mean
Is that, can you do that yourself?
Maintenance budget.
We don't, we sell the maintenance budget, money, so.
Okay.
I can't imagine I have a lot of money.
No, I'm just trying to think. I guess.
I think it's better to drain it and pay that expense than paying the propane bill for
Oh, yeah.
For that heat through that building.
That makes sense to me. If it doesn't make sense, based on your talk with somebody, let us know, but seems to make sense.
Yep.
The question for Brennan, sort of, within your experience, will the mold need to be remediated if that building was to be
Demo?
Taken demo?
No.
No? That wouldn't be a requirement?
Not in my professional experience, I would say no.
If the level of expenses are what
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And as far as, how do you think other trades contractors for doing in there, would that be a concern? Fans, if the doors were open, if they had to remove electrical, I mean
I mean, if you're gonna do a total structural demo of that building, it just needs to be like made safe. You're not gonna have trades go in and like take off every piece of conduit from the wall. So they're just gonna like generally make the building safe. It's already gonna be drained. Like they're gonna cut and cap the utilities at where they enter the building and they don't need to go, like, there shouldn't be any, like, really trade work in there anyway at this point because we're
Just gonna smash your way in.
Well, you wouldn't try to sell that.
Art form.
But I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
Send like a demo contractor.
No, there shouldn't be any.
Not a whole lot in there then.
No.
I mean
I also like, it would have to be like, I mean, I haven't been there since we've been, but it's gonna, it's just gonna get worse and worse, right? Especially if you like
Nothing inside of that building has moved since the committee was there.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna get like more moldy potentially, but
Temperature, until the temperature goes below fifty-five degrees.
Right, but like, is a steam cleaner in there?
Yeah.
You'd save
I would hope that we would get that out.
Yeah, you'd save the steam cleaner, and there's a lot of other stuff that would be saved.
In the forties.
And the
And is the mold still
Yeah, no. The ice missions, no, it's fine.
All right.
It would have to be so bad too, I feel like, for someone to actually like
I was in there today and I'm okay.
Well, I mean, like, a trade contractor, not a volunteer for over like years, that's different.
No, worse than I know. Okay, so that's good. So that was item A remediation. So we've agreed that no more money will be sent in there except for some minor maintenance that may or may not have to be done in order to keep it, the trucks are right now currently protected and there's a plan with a, with the least amount of impact you could possibly devise.
And that'll go October, as of right now, October fifteenth.
Okay.
Can you, Mike, there's somebody in the way.
Sorry.
Oh, Mr. Tell.
Okay, we assume. All right. So we'll move on if everybody's comfortable. We can move on to item B, claim to station thirteen existing foundation drain. Ralph, can you speak to that briefly?
Maybe they did.
Yeah, you did, but we didn't recall how well it was recorded.
Yeah, well, Public Works has diverted all announced those to surface drainage, not into the foundation drain. We found some, Public Works found a couple of pieces of missing pipe connections underground for the foundation drain. The front left corner was missing about ten feet of pipe. They dug it out, put these in. Where it all goes, hopefully it all goes into, well, that twenty-four inch concrete.
All right.
Otherwise, you know, I would discourage Public Works from doing anything there unless we absolutely have to. There's no sense in putting anything permanent in there. Until we know where we're going.
No, but I think, I don't think it was a waste of time to do that. It protects the slab, it keeps it drier. There's, there's good reasons for correcting those errors. I don't, I don't think it was a waste of time.
We can go over the, all the errors or, or what have you and how that building was constructed, but it's
No, it's irrelevant at this point. All right. Thank you for that, Ralph. Next item would be C, distribution of location study proposals.
That was really at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But some members didn't get theirs until
Right, so
Although they did by email, right?
I emailed it to all those who were not.
Who were not the meaning, okay.
Anyone who wants a printed copy, Andy has it.
Well, I seem to have some, but I don't seem to have It'd be some, some of those back pages missing.
So we'll come back to those, the new business, right, on evaluation, discussing evaluation and all.
All right.
Can, Mr. Chairman, can I just say something since people listening, just for the benefit of the people who are watching this video later or listening now, there were five proposals received. Those proposals were opened at the same time with two people watching and were photocopied at that time and distributed. The original received copies were put back right away in the selectman's office, just so we made sure there was some chain of custody. And those were, that all happened last Thursday night. And so then we'll have to talk about evaluating them, but I just wanted to bring people up to date on how we handled the proposals.
Yeah, that's good. And they were, they are there. The proposals are in the selectman's office, so. All right, so now with the, the next items were their own business are pretty much what we've just decided to put on hold. D is ongoing analysis of current future emergency service fire department facilities. I think
It all works into
That works into our further analysis after, you know, if we go forward in one of these, temporary housing, same thing. Sunbelt rental temporary firehouse, same thing. So next then is if we agree that we can just, we'll leave those on their own business, but we will just table them for now. That's acceptable. Recording secretary, do we I don't know if it's still true, but Peter told me, and you know, I think in good faith, he believed it, that the money could be used for a recording secretary. Should we try to find one that would sit here with us and record the minutes in a more professional manner than trying to do it from the video? Not that, you know, I don't, it seemed like a plan that would work, but I don't know if it's working as well as I thought it would. It's not. Yes, it's not. So that's fine. And then do we wanna do that? Should we look for that? And if we do, how do we do that? How do we find a recording secretary? I don't know the answer.
I can ask the one we have at the board finance.
Okay, would you be willing to do that? We also use Ellen Smith for the Emergency Services Group. Okay, I don't know her.
She knows most of the players.
She does. All right. Is anyone familiar enough with her to, knows her well enough to reach out to her and ask if she'd be willing to do it?
Sure.
Would you do that? Okay, good.
Does that, I don't post it by the word of the letter, no.
I don't know. But let's find out.
When they're looking for people, they do, but I think they've offered hours to people who are already on board.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
They're not voting or anything, so.
Right, and so, let, let's we get the names, we get some yeses, then I will, I'll take it to the baton after that and find out what it actually has to be done to make it happen. But I, I didn't know anyone, so the plan was preventative, seemed to, seemed to be, made sense at the time. Okay, inventory list, call records, department charters, handbooks, mission statement. That's where I think we probably have most of that. Chief Moore, would you be willing to brief along this line about documentation? Can you talk a little bit about what the board of finance was looking for on that? They, they seem to be asking you for very specific documents somewhere.
Just point of order, I don't like that. It's nothing to do with our committee.
It doesn't?
No.
No. Okay. I thought it was
It's an issue of finance and their budget, which it's not.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, I guess that was my question. Was any of that relevant to this stuff that we don't already have at all? Completely different. Okay, that, that was my question.
Well, I think, I think you're, again, Andrew, there was a discussion about the fire department providing their S O Ps, bylaw, and run cards.
This was, this was all picked up from previous offenders?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Request for information that, that hasn't
Okay.
Been brought forth yet, so.
So we have, I mean, on behalf of, we have the S O Ps, the bylaws, obviously. The, the run card, we did at work, I did print out the town of Wellington's run cards and response plans.
Okay.
I, I have to say that it's generally not something that we easily publish and put out to the public, so I don't, I don't know how you wanna handle that if it stays within the committee, you know.
In, for emergency services or security reasons.
The environment doesn't live in, it's, I don't want, you don't even know or how to respond to every single type of
Right, perspective.
However, I more than, you know, my opinion would be, I'm more than willing to share it with the groups. You have a general understanding of how things are laid out and how the town is broken up into certain response zones, who comes in mutually, and then I'll ask if it's really fine, but the grand picture, but I don't, you know, I would respectfully request that somebody not travel outside of this committee.
So perhaps, Mr. Chairman, could you ask the first selectman if we could if it's appropriate for us to look at those in executive session? Because if we don't look at them in executive session and we look at them, we have to share it with the public. So I think we wanna figure out before we look at it, if we can look at it in executive session.
And one of the things that we can do is, is that critical to what we're doing? It's gonna be covered with the study. I should back up. Depending on what venue you select, mutual aid plans are a large part of the study.
And most of the people called that out in their proposals that they would look at.
The short answer is no. It's not mission critical to our, it was more of a F Y I, just how intended.
No, I think this was just, you know, we were getting, kind of getting in our feet wet as a committee when these things were on the agenda. And, you know, I'm not looking for stuff that, that should be held close to the progress.
Yeah, and, and, you know, Frank, if there was a desire, or if, you know, folk, the, the group felt that it was something they wanted to see, we could also simply do a, a quick PowerPoint and review on how, you know, how we basically set up the talent response plans. They just leave it on a PowerPoint in our possession, to the extent that we can certainly do a tutorial for, for that too, if you wanted.
I'm sorry, Peter.
But the S O Ps and the bylaws are easy. The S O Ps, I would, I would ask would be the same thing, that it don't travel too far. That's, that's the, you know, how I look at it. That's our bread and butter of how we respond to all types of emergencies. Not that it's confidential, it's, it was not confidential, but
No, I think the more important things on that, that item are, at the end, apparatus inventory.
Apparatus inventore, easy, which we already got.
Call records, sure, not in great detail, but call records, just frequency number of
You're looking for, I think, what do you say, three, three or five years of past call records?
Yes.
So that would work.
Good. Yeah, I don't think
So how many sub-calls, how many structured fire
Exactly. Yeah, I think that was the information. I
That's fine.
I don't think we need to get more detailed than that, but
So, so perhaps, Mr. Chairman, you could clarify what's still missing from this list?
I will do my best to do that.
Because I know we have provided some of the stuff over time.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah. I will do that. Okay.
Item I was intended to be, that was just, we're gonna need to promote the work of this committee at some point.
Yes.
And try and generate some public support.
Yes, I, I believe that the, that the public should be involved as early as possible in these decisions. I, I, I think that the more, the more we, we can talk about these things that are happening, the, the better chance we have of getting to some sort of a yes, when we, whatever that answer is, when we go and present it. I think it's awkward when you hear about something for the first time at a town meeting, the night of the vote. I think at a minimum, we should be talking about these things at least a hundred and twenty days before, since we're gonna go to a town meeting and even longer, something like this. I would, I would like to be at the next town meeting. I wish I could have five minutes just to talk about the state of the town with this fire, just so people know what's going on. And whatever it is, if that, if that thing I did for the doggone show I did for the board of finance was good enough, then we'll do that again with some better visual aids and and, and just to let people know what's going on, so shouldn't be surprised.
So I had a question on that. That was the only official presentation we've done so far, right?
That was the only one, yes, as far as I know.
So I I watched earlier tonight, I watched the video of the C I P meeting on the fourth, September fourth. And Ralph spoke during present to speak, and he introduced himself as Ralph Toulis, speaking as the vice chair of the building committee.
Okay.
That's completely inappropriate. And someone who's been on a boards longer than any of us else in the room should know that. This committee did not ask you to go represent the committee? We did not have a report for them? You cannot go and rep, nobody on this committee can go to another town committee, another town function and say, I'm here making a report for that committee.
Unless the committee has endorsed that.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
And then you went on, not only to do that, but you went on to ask that committee to do certain things. Including looking at the money that's available for both fire departments and to shift it into, to look at potentially shifting it into the remediation problem. Part of the reason that we have these committees and we all put in time volunteering for these committees, and part of the reasons that I am offended by this is that this is the kind of stuff that then goes back towards making the fractures between the departments. If this committee recommends together with representatives of the two departments to pool resources from the two departments to do something, that's great. That is how we go forward. We can't have a representative of this committee go off on their own without this committee authorizing and saying, we think you should take resources from two organizations and put them together to do something. Then that pits the two organizations against each other. And that is why we don't go off on our own and represent a committee without the committee telling us to do that. Because then the committee would say what, the committee would agree on what we want to say. Right? And then Pete Latincich is a member of our committee also, right? And he did, he spoke at present to speak at the end, and he did something similar. Want to thank the board of selectmen for focusing on funding. We on the build, emergency services building committee would like to have that off our plates so we can focus on the charge, getting trucks into the garage before the snow flies. Very important thing to do, of course. If you can identify dormant C I P, Arba, and fire department maintenance money from both departments to do this, that would be great. And then, Mr. Toulis, in the beginning, and Mr. Latincich at the end, entertained question and answer about this committee's work. This is not a program. We decide what we're going to present to the public. The chairman endorses or makes statements to the public, or sends somebody off, sends Ralph, sends any one of us off to do that. We cannot, as individual members, go off and start presenting things to committees and say, I think you should do this. I think you should do that.
Point taken.
All right, sorry, rant over.
All right, well, thanks, Mike. I appreciate the reprimand.
Well, yeah, good, good for me to hear too. I, I really need to be make sure I'm not speaking next part. All right.
I think that's it.
Well, okay, now that's it for old business, new business. Open house, Talon has a new station three forty at two forty-seven Garing Road. I think you, somebody said it was a possible around two mil. And we should look at it? If, if we stay in groups of, how big are we? We're ten? So we have groups of four, groups of four, we could, I think it's
Like we did
Yeah.
For the school in Talon, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I find it helpful to go with somebody because there's always something I don't see and it's good to have a conversation, so I don't know how we want to arrange that.
Yeah, I think it's just important not to have a quorum, so we don't have to call, we would have to warn and call them.
Yeah, we don't have, yeah, and of course, anybody from the public is free to go there, I'm sure, just if you have to ask.
On that issue, I checked the minutes of their fire department subcommittee this afternoon. They're nowhere near ready for an open house, so.
Okay.
I, I think that their chief could get us in there if we so require. At least according to Timmy Newsho.
What, do we wanna wait for them to be welcoming us with open arms?
They're going, they're going through punch list items now, so I, I don't know.
Probably be a distraction. Everybody wouldn't appreciate us as much.
I think when we get, when they get closer to an open house, maybe we can sneak in before that.
Anybody know anybody over there on a personal level? Just, next time you talk to them, say we'd like to see them. Thanks. Thank you, Alex. Alex nodded his head, knowing with other record. Okay, new business item B, cost comparison, remediation versus deconstruction.
Move.
So we've moved that? Okay, that's fine. I guess this is the the, the meat here for tonight would be, begin the discussion of how to evaluate the five location studies. Need to forward a recommendation to the board of selectmen following our ten October twenty twenty-four meeting to maintain the anticipated dry tonight. So who wants to? I don't wanna take the lead on this because I don't know. And I don't know enough about how to approach this, so.
Well, I'm gonna look at the day. I'm going back to look at the R F P just so we can because I wanna look at what dates were.
So on the last page of the R F P, Mike?
Where was the paper that had the costs? I don't see of each
I have written on the front.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't do, I thought I did that, but then I, maybe I gave it away. Maybe it's in my, in my house and I didn't
Does someone have the R F P handy? I don't have the latest version in here.
I didn't bring it.
And I don't think you can get it online anymore.
All right, well.
Thought I had it, Mike, I might have.
No, I have it.
Right.
Oh, it was emailed, right? It was emailed around?
Yes.
So all right, go back to email. Yeah, I think the chairman emailed it out. Let's do that. Anyway, that was back around the
Twenty-one, maybe?
Somewhere around there, yeah, that sounds right.
Page four. Questions were to be submitted by September fifth. Deadline first medal proposal, September nineteenth. Discussion of possible decision by the board of selectmen regarding execution of a contract to perform station location study on or about October
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
So first of all, Mr. Chairman, did you get any questions? In email?
I
From the people submitting the R F Ps?
I didn't get any questions.
Then that's easy, since the deadline's come and gone anyway.
One, according to Shannon, and all it was, was a request for an extension of mine.
Oh, which, which I'm assuming was denied.
I, I don't, they never got a response, so.
Okay. Okay, so we opened the proposals on the twelfth?
Yeah.
I mean, the nineteenth, I'm sorry, nineteenth.
On the nineteenth.
And so then it is where, where the time's ticking if we wanna try to get it to a decision for the selectmen on or about October fifteenth. All right, so
That leaves us with a little over two weeks.
All right, so what do we need to do? Some people just got them. Not everyone's had a chance to read every single page. What, what is our, I think the question there is, what is our criteria?
Well, I'd suggest for us to discuss and tear apart the idea that we would wanna get the rest of the committee members to do their review pretty quickly.
Okay.
And what's up?
Sorry, Ralph did email them to us that weren't
Sorry, Ralph did email them to us that weren't available at the last meeting.
So maybe we should, if you want to set a deadline as to when everyone has to promise they're done reviewing them. And then we should see if we have consensus on maybe the top three and then invite. We talked about inviting someone from like the board of finance and stuff to join us and maybe those.
We talked about that, we figured out that we have them here.
Oh, that's true. We do a board of finance, right? Same board of selectmen, right? Okay, yes, that's right. I was going in the other room making copies, so.
That's good.
So, so then. CIT, that's what.
Technically, you have steward who sits with you.
The chairman of CIT.
Oh, chairman.
Okay. And yeah, I mean, I think we probably can invite, we have enough, we can always invite more to, to get.
Right, and then maybe what we should do, if there's consensus on say the top three. Then we would ask each of those top three to do a zoom.
Okay.
With that group of people.
That sounds good.
And then the um.
I don't know.
Uh so um if the. If the three, top three or whatever, if we agree on that, or get those three to zoom with the input from the CIP person and us. Um maybe we can come to a decision out of those top three.
Okay.
It seems like there are a couple outliers based on price, but maybe we would only entertain. Um I mean, you don't ask one interview all five anyway.
Right, I suppose though for our initial review, maybe price shouldn't be the governing factor. We should look at these without thinking of price. Um a second thing is what, as a layperson who does not understand emergency services and all that it entails. What are some key things that I should be looking for in their proposals?
So here's what I did, even though I wrote a lot of the.
What's up?
Sure, the first thing should be compliant to the RFP.
Yes.
Right, that, right.
There you go.
Take the RFP, what did the RFP ask for, did they provide?
Very good.
Are they light, are they heavy, or they?
Right, and that's kind of how, that's how I looked at all of them.
Is that enough? Maybe that, is that?
Well, that's what you asked for, and so that should be the primary valuation.
Okay, that works.
Were they responsive to the RFP? For example, one of, I think it was the lowest priced bidder um. Or one of the low priced bidders looks like a pretty good firm, but they missed a key thing. They didn't identify the team that would be provided to this task and that was asked for in the RFP. Provide us with the information about the team.
Okay.
So we could choose to just kick them out because they weren't responsive, or we could say, we're not moving forward with their thing until they give us the team.
Right.
But maybe we have choices on that. I'm just saying, that's a good way to evaluate.
It's a good way to evaluate.
Did they meet the RFP?
Are there any other nuances that you see when you're reading through those that make you go, oh, because of the way they s. Like I heard someone say that some people weren't gonna do a psych visit. To me, that would be kind of a.
Yeah, more opinion, but I share that, that, that I, you know, when I read through them, if you were gonna come to the town and then get the lay of the land.
If you're doing Matthews and stuff, I would think that's not good enough, so, right, okay. What's that?
It wasn't a bottom line feat.
They, they had like an Alan Carter.
Right.
But how, how do you know with the existing infrastructure without being here? So anybody that wasn't coming here.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, 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 you know, psych isn't. Alright, so compliance with the RFP.
I don't remember, did the RFP specifically say they had to visit the sites? I'm not sure that.
No, what, from just, just in the basis of what you're asking for.
Right. I agree, I agree they need to be here. I'm just saying, can we do it by the RFP or do we have to, right?
It does say study expectations are to meet with the fire chiefs that need pad administration and zoning economic development staff. Of course, that could be a virtual meeting, but it does say meeting and lay, like meet specifically.
That, that one says that they, they're offering virtual, but there's, if we would like them to come.
Yes, yeah. That'd be twenty eight hundred bucks a pop, no, round me.
Her, her, whoever they sent.
First, first class.
No, you're right, no, you're absolutely right, that the hidden costs. But as I'm reading these, if I saw one that said, that seemed, everything was great except for one thing. Is then it would be fair to say, hey, look, you missed this important factor, but we really like everything else.
If you have a paragraph in the RFP.
Sure.
The town of Wellington reserves the right to reject any and all submittals, waive any irregularities. Reissue all or part of this request for proposals and not award any contracts. All at its discretion and without.
But I think there is at least.
There's at least one, that's fine.
That, when I went through that, that was a hundred percent, that it met exactly everything that we asked for. Sorry, there's at least one that is.
So I think if the committee members go back to the email from um. Ralph Toulis on the twenty second of August that has the RFP and the location study scope. Oh no, I'm sorry, that's one of Ralph's comments on it, wait, I'm on the wrong.
Eight twenty one.
Eight, I'm sorry, yes, eight twenty one. From uh from Andy, from the chairman, eight twenty one, the RFP and the scope of work are there. If you need, so you can get, take the RFP and then compare it to the proposals.
Right.
And I just wrote notes on the front of every one of them about like those little irregularities you talked about, Andy, like. Oh, maybe they missed this, but maybe we could just ask them for it.
Right, yeah, I, I think that's a fair thing to do.
Like the ones that didn't provide their team. I would never, I would never engage them without knowing who the team is.
Sure.
But I might ask them, hey, here's your chance to tell us the team, even though you didn't respond to the RFP properly.
Right. And then may not know the team, maybe they don't know the team until they get further down the road, who knows?
And we're not hiring them if they don't tell us the team.
Exactly, that's fine, yeah, I like it.
Well, the other on the spectrum is that they can't follow some instruction of providing, but your team is.
Right.
Right.
You should, you should get tossed.
And, right, right.
That's true.
But it was a dip.
Right, well, part of me, part of me thought that, just throw it away, except then you have two bidders that are in the lower price. Who identified this project as for one fire department.
Right.
Do we want to say that's an irregularity that we throw theirs out for too? Now all of a sudden, we've thrown out three of them.
But they, but they also didn't read the RFP.
He did that. I know, I agree, they didn't. But are we gonna get, then, you know, we'd have left the two high priced ones.
Right. And maybe that, maybe.
And they're way higher.
Alright, so, okay, so that, that's good, so if I, as I read through it, I, I can go exactly through. What the RFP areas I requested, and if I have any little nuances that bother me, I make a note of it and then we talk about those.
Yeah.
And we're good, okay.
Yeah, let's see if that works.
If we come back to the next meetings and speaking is very hypothetical, we, there's a quick, there may be some outliers, but there's a, there's a general consensus of the top two or three. Do, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about what questions I would have. For them that I didn't already get answered in the review of their RFP. I'm thinking about from a time perspective. Well, what, what exactly are we hoping to gain for information that we don't, that we don't have at our fingertips? If we do the interview process?
I had a couple of questions that I wrote on the front of a couple of my packets and maybe we could ask those questions in email, maybe we don't need a zoom interview. I just was thinking, if we wanted the participation of other stakeholders in town like CIP. Then that would be the way to do it. You get that person in there and they participate in the interview, they hear the answers to our questions. I don't know, that's a. Or, or we could just send back a list of questions to each of them and say, like, to the one that didn't provide the team.
Right.
We're not going any further with your proposal unless you provide us the team.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and we could do it that way also. I just want it, I'm just thinking of the schedule.
Trying to do a productivity perspective.
Yeah.
I, you know, in reading these, I don't know, there wasn't a question off the top of my head, I gotta ask them that. It was great, some were complete, some I didn't care for right away for various reasons. I want to get closer, I don't want to rush anything, that's on my point, but.
Right, but also not have a drag out for long.
Yeah, the fifteenth is a good party date.
So if we look at the calendar, let me look at the meeting dates and see if we have, if we're gonna crash into calendar problems.
Oh, terrible. I have to, I will say now, what, 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 what the, the fire chiefs have done to secure the equipment. Um does make me. Feel that. I was feeling a really great sense of urgency before, that something had to be done at the time as a risk. Think the work that everyone, that you, that the chiefs have done to make sure that that isn't happening. Is good, so, but sort of like, there's a little bit of a sigh of relief here that. You don't have to railroad things quite as hard. I was, I was a little, you know, I was disappointed with. I don't know, just a lack of support, that, that, there seemed to be a lot of resistance to our original plan and I didn't like that. I understood it, I just didn't like it. But I think now. I think we're on a, a, a good path and uh.
The generosity of some residents too, some biz, local businesses at most.
Yeah.
The fire trucks.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, yeah, but isn't that wonderful that, you know, I talk about it and. I often, I've said it many times now, I think sometimes the best solutions are not in this room. It doesn't matter what room you're in.
Right.
But the solutions are often out there, but how do you tap into that? And sure enough, we had some, you know, some good times. People show up and say, hey, we can help you out, that's wonderful.
So as Britt was pointing out, our next scheduled meeting would be October tenth. The next selectman's meeting after that would be October twenty first.
Right.
So we could conceivably have a. A goal that everyone will have reviewed and have their opinions. I personally ranked mine one through five, just so that I could keep a sense of order.
Yep.
But people, whatever their evaluation method is, um could come to the meeting on the tenth, ready.
Right.
To try to have consensus on the top three or whatever. And, and move forward with a recommendation. Uh in the meantime, if you could reach out and ask the CIP chair if they would be available.
I will.
Participate, whether we do a zoom or whether they just join us for the meeting on the tenth. And we review them, ask them to participate in the review on the tenth.
Britt, would you mind if I reached out and asked the bill for the finance chair as well?
Yeah, go for it, or the one I have.
Alright, did everybody get a chance to, to, just my own knowledge, did we get a chance to go through them?
Yeah, I did not.
No.
You didn't, okay, right. Good morning.
Okay, so. Um so under C, begin discussing how to evaluate, we've agreed that we will. Look at, we'll basically use the RFP to see how, we'll see that, and here too. We won't necessarily focus on price right now, so if you didn't know what it was, that's not, that's fine. Um to go with the best candidate and then, and we also talked about that if we did see. One or two things missing, we can certainly ask, we, we, it's within our rights to say, hey, we liked everything, there's a couple of things missing. You know, we missed that in the proposal or what?
If we're gonna ask questions, we should have that responded to before the tenth, shouldn't we?
The problem is we won't have the gathering of all of our questions before the tenth.
I, I, I would just think that if, if everybody ranked it, we say, hey, this, this is the top three, we all agreement. But number two, didn't ask a couple of things, if we got that.
We have, I think their email contacts on every one of those proposals, so at the meeting on the tenth, we can agree what our questions are and we can send them from the meeting on the tenth.
Absolutely.
And.
Okay with that?
Yeah, no, I would just, I would just.
And then we could make a recommendation pending, pending a positive answer to the questions.
Right.
That we would recommend whatever to the board of selectmen for the meeting on the twenty first. That does give us one week if there's.
Yeah.
Some crazy answer comes back.
Right.
We could call an emergency zoom meeting or something and do with it.
They remind me of insurance proposals, you know, you say, hey, you guys are. You're, you'd be in our top tier if you could do these three things, they go, you can't do, it's like, okay, you're not the top tier and it gets thrown out. It's pretty clear, we're clear on that. Alright, so that's item C, I think we. Everyone okay with the tenth of October, we'll have them all read? And if you didn't, then your opinions won't get entered into the rec.
Cause in FYI, it won't be good.
And you. Well, you guys suck.
Retired guys.
What you got to do?
Uh, I'm coming back from Ireland that day.
That's all right, your excuse.
He won't have shaken the accent yet, so he doesn't want to be in a public meeting.
I'm coming home that day.
Is there, if you do, if you, uh let's see, how can we, we'd like to get your opinions.
Yeah, they should submit.
They should, whatever you have, you can submit it to me, I guess, submit it to the chair. And uh we'll, uh we'll, we'll, we'll roll that into the minutes, you know, whatever you see.
Okay.
Um if, if you could do that before the tenth, that would be better. Or on the tenth, I don't know, do it from, can you get it?
It's just what you want to do while you're in Ireland.
Yeah.
He's ready to go.
Log in at the meeting.
Send us an email about the six people who. Instead of five.
Well, two of them look exactly the same, but I, okay, so updated agitional grant funding, um yeah, that's, that was a question. I think I wanted to know. When I was talking to Damato, when he was talking about this. Two hundred fifty thousand or whatever it was grant that might come in for emergency operations center or something else. That was a matching grant that we had to throw in something in order to get it? Does that, uh, does that ring a bell? Nothing?
I have no idea.
Okay, then, then we'll, we'll just table that and I'll ask him directly. Uh I'm not sure that he knew exactly, but he said it's still on the, the agenda, the federal agenda, it's still. It's not, it's still in committee, it hasn't been rejected yet.
Right, but there will be. Things that have yet to comply with to get the money.
Right, and some of that, I thought some of it was a participatory amount, but I don't know. Alright, I'll play on one. It was just starting out there, and then it's a um. The final thing, is there anything?
No, that, that's a moot point.
That's a moot point, okay.
As we previously discussed.
Alright, no, that's fine. Okay, correspondence, um I didn't see any. Nothing in particular. Present to speak, publication is desired and encouraged because we'll be limited to time and appropriateness comments. To maintain progress, stay on topic and maintained in quorum. Is there anybody present to speak? Uh we have some people online. I don't see any hands raised. They're both in the room and they're fed, I don't know, physical, that's fine. Next meeting, uh ten October twenty twenty four, six thirty PM, lower level, action items, the action item was.
Review all proposals.
Review all proposals and uh. Fire about, find out about something else, we've early on. Oh, secretary, recording secretary. Are we recording secretary?
Who was, uh, oh, Ron was gonna reach out to Eileen.
And I'm gonna reach out to the board lines.
Okay.
Break the law, and then uh.
Mr. Chairman, you had a couple of action items, right?
Me?
He wrote some stuff, you wrote something down.
He was writing, so I assumed he wrote them down.
I did write them down. Oh, first selectman, uh supposed to ask about the executive session.
Yes.
Did we decide that we don't really need that or?
Well, I don't know. I'm, you know, I'm gonna ask anyway.
Find out, find out anyway, for security reasons.
For security reasons that we may want to go into executive session for reviewing somewhat more sensitive call data. Then, then Billy would be comfortable of being released to the public. Alright, is there anything else?
Motion. Uh you were supposed to reach out and ask for chairman, women, chair.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, I do have that.
For CIP.
That's my action items.
Maybe it was something else. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they gonna be here for the review process for this next meeting or where do you want them, where do you want them?
I'm gonna ask them to show up on the tenth, either zoom or otherwise.
They want these emails ahead of time or is that like not a?
I don't know.
Let's see, why not? Make as much as possible.
It's public, once they're open, it's public information, I agree.
Okay, so now these are all open to the public.
I think, I think it's FOI-able once you open the bills.
If you open and receive them.
Even though we haven't waited that you, okay, that's fine. Alright, so.
So you could email the RFP and the scope of work. That you've already emailed to us on the twenty first, you could email it to those people once they agree to join us. And email them the scans that Ralph did of the five proposals. That we don't have to worry about getting paper to them.
Perfect. Alright, I will do that. I'll dial you in when I get it done.
Actually, the, for those um. Digital documents or how they were submitted.
Yes, right. One was scanned.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're all, yeah, they're all attachments.
But they're all in digital forms.
Alright. Alright, I will reach out to. I'll ask, I'll ask Peter to show up.
Dancing.
Old school. We'll, we'll try to get the uh. The heads of each committee. Alright, motion to adjourn?
The rule moved.
All in favor, discussion, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're adjourned at seven fifty.
Seven five oh.
Seven five oh. Thank you for your participation.